Cavosa Excavating is a family-owned and operated company specializing in the installation of Title V septic systems. Cavosa Excavating is one of the largest septic system installers on Cape Cod. Whether it's upgrading your current system or installing a whole new system, Cavosa Excavating can do the job. Cavosa Excavating, (508) 563-5530.
Founder Abraham Penn taught a valuable lesson that has been part of a tradition since 1919 when he said, "I'd rather make a friend than make a sale." For more than 90 years, Pearton has been making friends as a unique family-owned company right here in Cape Cod. At Pearton Cape Cod on 199 Main Street, as well as Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more. Pearton Cape Cod, (548) 0116, or peartoncapecod.com.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. This is a special meeting this evening, and it's for the Board's deliberations to come to a conclusion about an article to put forth for the special town meeting this year. If you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going this evening, I know that Selectman Putnam is on his way en route. He spoke with us earlier this evening. I would like to thank each and every one of you who participated in the open public comment period last week, whether it be verbal or written public comment. I know that the Board received a large amount of public comment, as in the written text. There was additional public comments that were coming in to individual members. I know on my behalf that folks continued to send me public comment even after the deadline, although that is not part of the open public comment period. When folks do send me an email, I do take every effort to read that email and had the ability to do so. This evening, the Board of Selectmen, as I said, will be trying to come up with a conclusion of how and what to put on as a warrant article for this year's special town meeting. This is a board discussion tonight, along with the town manager and assistant town manager. Folks have already had their opportunity to give us public comment, and this evening would be an inappropriate time for public comment, as we have closed the both written and verbal public comment on this. Everybody, in fact, as we move forward, will have an opportunity, once we put this on a warrant article, to discuss it at precinct meetings, at the town meeting, as well as moving forward. So this is only the beginning of a process. I hope that the Board of Selectmen can come to some conclusion and some consensus, and we're going to work diligently to do so. The openly meeting law provides for everybody to see the Board of Selectmen deliberate on an issue. That does not mean that when we deliberate, everybody else gets an opportunity to speak when we deliberate. The open meeting law is to provide an opportunity for everybody out there to see what we're saying and how we're saying it. So as we move forward this evening, that in fact is what we're going to do. Again, I will remind folks of the Board of Selectmen's speaker policy. There are no speakers, but that folks in the room are cautioned that we will not allow or tolerate any outbursts. We will not take any comments from the crowd, and if you have something to say to someone your neighbor, we would appreciate it if you would take that outside so that you could say that, so you don't disrupt or distract a member of the Board. If you remember that if you distract a member of the Board, by merely distracting, you may take their thought away, that they should be concentrating what other members of the Board are saying. With that being said, I'd like to get going this evening with the Board. Any specific comments the Board would like to say before? We don't really have a wide agenda. Our agenda is relatively freewheeling here, that the Board of Selectmen discusses. But is there anything that I missed that the Board would like to make a comment on before we go? Okay. So I'll open it up at that. Maybe I'll ask the assistant town manager, who's put together a multitude of some options, and what the costs are for those options, to go through those with the Board, and then we can talk about where each and every one of our thoughts are. Keep in mind, what Heather is going to present are only tools for us to be able to make and draw our own conclusions. Okay?
Thanks, Heather.
Sure. Why don't I just familiarize you with the material you have before you first. One of the first items you should have are three articles, which were drafted to anticipate any possible option the Board may consider. There are three. The first article relates to appropriating a sum of money for repayment of existing debt obligations. It details specifically the prior authorizations for Wind 1. So that deals with any existing debt. The second article is to appropriate a sum of money that's primarily designed to address mitigation, but it also includes, without limitation, costs to acquire real estate, install insulation windows, air conditioning, including dismantling and disposing of turbines, all engineering design costs, and any other expenses. So it really has any raise and appropriate needs that the Board may have relative to whatever decision you may make. And the third article is to appropriate a sum of money to supplement the fiscal 2014 operating budget, because as you know, we've already submitted the fiscal 2014 operating budget, and that includes revenue related to the operation of these facilities. So these were drafted sort of kitchen sink style to give the Board what it needs to deliberate and hopefully draft one or several articles, depending on the choices that you make. I'll walk through in a minute just some conceptual, I'm calling it a conceptual discussion tool. I was asked to prepare it for a presentation very late this afternoon, so I haven't seen it up here yet, and we'll look at it together, but you all have hard copy as well. In addition to that, you have a lot of financial information that was prepared by the town. It's just factual data. It's the debt repayment schedule. For the two existing notes, there was a $9.9 million note on Wind 1, as well as a $4 million note. Those are the two obligations that would be recommended to seek a debt exclusion, shifting the burden of this debt obligation from the operating budget to an excluded tax, annual tax effort. I would recommend that the Board consider that regardless of what option you consider. Clearly, the pressures of decision-making relating to these facilities are going to continue to place potential pressure on municipal operations, so that's there for you. There's also a summary of the existing energy accounts, as well as the financial impacts that Amy Lowell prepared last year. So that, these are just resources for the Board that you may need to look at as time goes by. There's also some numbers that I'll talk about in terms of costs. There's a little debt schedule for those. It's just a quick and dirty debt schedule on a few of those. As I refer to numbers, I wanted you to have the backup on it. Lastly, one of the areas that the wind turbine options process didn't wrestle with are any choices the Board may have handling Wind 1 or Wind 2 independently, if you wanted to look at the project as two distinct entities and make separate choices on them. So we did ask for some additional financial analysis on that, which is a bit of an eye chart, but here it is. I just summarized on the front page what the 2015 impacts are on operations of Wind 1 and Wind 2. So that is also there for the Board's consideration. And lastly, there is a map developed by Jay produced, as well as some spreadsheets that show properties, values, and existing complaints. A lot of this material has been available for some time, but I'm not sure it's ever been immediately presented to the Board. That's what you have for material. And if I can just get the lights on, make sure this works.
Want to take it with this microphone, Heather?
Um, I think I guess I'll pass.
Okay.
Hopefully that will pick me up. I'll try to be as clear as I can.
Can we have the lights back off here? We do need some lighting in the room for television. I don't know, they'll be in if we do, all right? Just so you know. If the television crew needs additional lighting, please let us know.
Okay. I would like to reinforce that these are not financial planning documents. This is prepared really to give the Board an order of magnitude, sense of what different decisions may have an impact on the taxpayers of the town. It's presented as a discussion tool. When the Board gets closer to making a decision, we can certainly prepare much more formal financial documents that would give a more detailed analysis of any of the decisions you may make. So I wanted to outline some of the steps that you may need to take and choices you need to make along the way. This is starting with the option of dismantling and shutting down Wind 1 and Wind 2. I'll wait for Selectman Putnam. Welcome.
Not a problem. We've just begun, and Heather's just going through some potential options.
Again, Brent, Selectman Putnam, I wanted to be clear that these are not financial documents. They're order-of-magnitude concepts that help illustrate what the potential fiscal impacts could be to taxpayers and the town, depending on the choices that the Board makes. So the first one I'm looking at is shut down and dismantle Wind 1 and Wind 2. The steps required, and I assume that this is effective no earlier than July 1, 2013. Assumes a worst case, that it would cost $400,000 or more to dismantle and restore the site. I note that there is also a best case, that there would be additional one-time revenue of $600,000 potentially in resale, and that was $200,000 to $600,000. But that is unknown until you do the procurement. You would have to seek a funding source to pay for the remaining debt on Wind 1. An option is obviously to exclude the existing debt, which is the material we referred to earlier. That would require town meeting and the ballot. I just note that the fiscal 2014 budget is funded by existing energy fund balances, so fiscal 14 is in place now. Gives you a window of opportunity for 2014. You'd have to seek a funding source for the wastewater treatment facility energy for fiscal 2014 and thereafter. You'd need town meeting action. And then it comes to a question, is that a pass, a cost that you intend to pass on as a new cost at the ballot? You'd have to fund minimum operating until the turbines are dismantled and removed. There are some operations that's required to maintain the viability of the turbines until they are removed. But another question is, do you pass those costs on? Continue on those. As a result, we would have breached the REC contract that we have with the Mass Clean Energy Center, and that must be paid back or absolved. That also requires town meeting action to raise those funds. And then there's a question again, is that a ballot question? Do you pass those costs on? The model assumes that Wind 2 is closed out, and there is no repayment of the 100% grant, so this relates to only Wind 1 debt. It assumes no additional financial assistance, and bear with me, because there will be models that assume financial assistance, so we'll look at that as well. It maintains operations as is through June 30. We talked about recommended operations through the dismantling. And you'd have to authorize the town manager to seek proposals to dismantle and take away both turbines, or decommission and restore the site. So this looks at year 1, the estimated property owner contribution if funded by taxes only. And this is like looking at year 1. Year 1 costs, the annual debt's about $430,000. The dismantling is 400, if you raise that in one year and pay for it in one year. The annual energy is $100,000. The REC repayment is at about $130,000. And then operating is about $100,000. So that gives you about a $1.2 to $1.5 million cost. The estimated impact on an average family home, which is $470,000, is between $53 and $66 in year 1. And I'll just walk through this. Year 2, you don't have any of those dismantling costs, and you'd have an annual cost of $760 to $800,000, with an impact on the average annual home of $33 to $35. Year 3 assumes that the decommissioning is complete. You're no longer paying those annual operating costs. Brings you down to $630,000 a year, and the estimated impact is $30. And that is approximately the value that you need to pay over the next 15 years, every The lost value and opportunity, these are gross, again, the value of each of the turbines. And then the abandoned revenue, which is $8.4 million, which came from the Wind Turbine Options Process Report, which is the 18-year cumulative surplus for a total estimate of 18.4. These numbers have been presented in any number of ways. This is just one way of looking at it. What you need to do to raise and appropriate, to implement that option, you need the $5 million or the remaining debt obligation on Wind 1, $400,000 to dismantle, $300,000 for three years of energy, three years of operating, and then $1.9 million in REC obligation for a total of $11.9. And I just note on the 400, anything below the $5 million, except for the REC obligation, those are choices. Those are choices the Board would have to make. These are some alternatives. Assumes financial assistance on Wind 1 debt and no cost to dismantle. And you look at a cost still, even with the debt gone and the annual, the REC contract remains, that's still $230,000 to $250,000 a year, with an annual tax impact of $10 or $11 a year. The lost opportunity is the same. And then an option that hasn't been discussed and is before the Board for its deliberation is to shut down Wind 1 and dismantle, and Wind 2 operated as designed. Again, these aren't recommendations, these are just analysis. Assumes the same, basically the same assumptions, that still the dismantling is about the same, the revenue is about, the potential revenue is half. I think all the rest are the same. So that looks, in year 1, your annual debt is about the same. The dismantling is there, and then the operating for a $930,000 expense. Your revenue is now down to about $420,000, so your annual remaining obligation is in the $500,000 range, with a tax impact between $23 and $25. Year 2, I'll just go back, you see the, oops, I think I'm going forward here. The dismantling is in this option. The difference between year 1 and year 2 is there's no dismantling cost in year 2, and those come down to almost a net breakeven under that scenario. And this is the same option with financial assistance on the debt, and allows the transfer of REC, the REC contract to Wind 2, which we do know that Mass CEC has already verbalized that it would be willing to transfer our existing contract from Wind 1 to Wind 2. That allows the town annual operating revenue in the area of $320,000 to $420,000. There's no tax impact, there's revenue generated. The $320,000 range, just for order of magnitude, is equivalent to the annual operating cost of the Department of Human Services, or perhaps the Council on Aging and the Department of Veteran Services, or is less than our annual cruiser replacement cost. So it's a significant revenue source for the town, and could give the town flexibility in operations. The lost opportunity cost, there's obviously the asset value, but 4.2 million is the abandoned revenue, which is the half of the 18-year accumulated surplus in the Wind Turbine Options Process Report. Other important issues to consider under this option, because it suggests that a turbine remains in operation, are the sound study participation with Mass CEC or others recommended in the report, mitigation for Wind 2, and there's some more information upcoming on Again, these are just concepts for discussion. Some of the data that we've looked at for Wind 1, our reports you have prepared by the GIS department show that three of five homes within a quarter mile have complained, or 60%. Five of 11 homes within a quarter mile have complaints for Wind 2, and that's 45%. And then for Wind 1, between the quarter mile and a third of a mile, 29%, six out of 21 homes. And for Wind 2, five out of 11 homes, 17%. It just suggests to us, as we've heard, that Wind 1 appears to be more of a concern than Wind 2. And again, mitigation continued. The home purchase within a quarter mile, and these are just, again, just ways to look at it. Total assessed values of homes within a quarter mile of Wind 1 is $2.2 million. The total assessed valuation of homes within a quarter mile of Wind 2 is $4.6 million, for a total of $6.8 million, 16 homes. And then compensation is another subject that's been discussed, that really we haven't put any numbers to. Homes from the quarter mile to the third of mile, from Wind 1, there are 21. The same for Wind 2, there are 24, for a total of 45 homes. The Board could consider some economic compensation, just for discussion purposes, or using a value of $50,000.
Greg, if you can just hold me.
If you apply that.
Just one second. Are you going to film this, or if so, you need to ask, and you identified film record?
I'm John Carlton Ross, and I would like to ask to film.
Very good, thank you. Okay, sorry.
So mitigation, just applying those two concepts. The maximum annual payment, again, this doesn't contemplate the resale value if you were to purchase every one of those homes in those impact areas. Would be the maximum annual payment on a 20-year note would be $612,000. The peak annual cost of the release repayment is $202,000. You have the debt operations, allowing a total annual revenue of a deficit of $395,000, with an average tax impact of $18 per year. And in order to accomplish that, you'd seek a raise and appropriate for the home value and for the release of $9.5 million. And then I took a look at a couple of hybrid models. Operate both turbines, and hypothetical mitigation A means the homes are resold, the town earns 50% of the assessed value, and you pay a $50,000 release payment. Annual home purchase, that brings that down to $300,000. Going to just walk right down to the bottom here. Again, that ends with a net deficit with an impact of $3 to $4. You operate both turbines. The homes are resold, you earn only 50% of the value, and you pay the release, and you get financial assistance on the debt. Starts to look like a project that could work. The annual purchase of the homes, if you lost 50% of their value, would be $300,000 a year. The cost of the release payment, no cost of debt, you still have operational costs for a total annual of about $602,000. The value of production is $948, with a total available revenue in the range of $350,000. Okay. Operate Wind 2 and shut down Wind 1, and the homes are resold at 100% of the purchase price, meaning you earn back what the town purchased the properties for, the same repayment and financial assistance. There's no annual purchase cost. The cost of the release is in there, there's no debt, the operations are still required, and the value of production is about half, $420,000. That puts you in a total annual revenue of $120,000. You obviously still have the remaining benefit of the energy production for the wastewater treatment facility. And that is it. There's more material in the worksheets that I gave you, but I want to give you a sense of where some of the options put you.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone like to begin? Does anyone? Mr. Donald, are you going to film this, or are you just taking a picture?
I'm just taking a picture.
Okay. Just need to let me know if you're going to film this.
All right.
Great, thank you.
If you film here and...
That's all right, thank you. That's all right, thank you. Would anyone like to begin, where their thoughts are?
Take them down. That's my thought.
Mr. Chairman, I, this has not been an easy decision. I have prepared a statement I'd like to read, if that's okay with you. It starts off a bit slow, but it'll make my point. I mean, three years ago, I mean, when it came to finances, the most I did, I was the treasurer for the Police Athletic League and looked at a budget of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. I remember my first year on this board, looking at the budget, I didn't, I looked for a lot of assistance, I would go to Heather, and I, when it came to town meeting and looking at things, and Bob, and I tell you this, last year I've learned quite a bit, but it's still very overwhelming. But I'd like to just read the statement I prepared, and I hope you'd allow it and just be patient, it won't take me long.
No problem.
I remember three years ago, Pat and I had a discussion on the night of the election, and she looked at me, we're at the Nimrod, and she said, you know, this is, I think it's going to be a good year. And little did we know, a few weeks later, we'd be facing the whole boil water issue. And when the people started reaching out to this board, I told you I received over fifty phone calls at my home, and I have everyone's name, and I have the list, and everybody who called me. But it really occurred to me at that point that this board of Selectmen, or where the people turn in their time of concern on a particular issue and their need. Now, these folders in front of me are all the documents I have collected since I've been on the board, May of 2010. There are studies, there are papers from the DEP, it's in there, but it does not include the hundred and eighty emails I have at home in my computer, nor the over three hundred emails and letters that we received in the public comment period. We have an issue here that has really, I think, gone on too long, and it has divided our town. I have been known in the past to be very critical of a particular issue, why it happened, and at times brought it up in public rather than maybe making a phone call first, which probably maybe I should have on a couple times, but in this case, I just want to be very positive and move forward to rectify this issue. I have listened to many people on both sides of the issue, I have read many documents, and it was still an issue to me that I wasn't quite sure if I could come to an actual certain decision on what I wanted to do. I know I called months ago for us to reach out to the state and maybe Senator Murray, but we were going to wait, and I respected the decision of the chairman at the time till the decision and the options from the WTOP were published. I am happy to see the positive move, I think it's positive, by Representatives Vieira and Madden to file legislation to assist towns in the Commonwealth with just like the issue we are facing. I think, to me, it shows that the State House is acknowledging there are instances when there will be problems with turbines sited improperly. As Senator Murray stated in her February 2012 letter to the, in her own town of Plymouth, the ZBA, she, like I, very committed to renewable energy. However, she, like me, also believes that industrial-sized turbines do not belong in residential areas. We can disagree, and we probably will, is the WWTF a residential area? I believe it is, because it's close proximity to the houses that are there. In her November letter of 2012 to a Falmouth resident, she writes that for the past few months, she has worked with Falmouth officials and the Mass DEP to obtain the completion certificate for wind two, which would save the town upwards of five million dollars in any instance wind two does not comply, continue to comply with its current operation. I am convinced that Senator Murray can and will step in and offer whatever assistance we need to resolve this issue. I think all we need to do is ask, but like Pat had said, I think, last meeting, we need to be very, very specific when we make this request. When I ran for office, Mr. Chairman, one of the things I would tell people if they came to me with a particular issue, for me to look into something, that if I make you a promise, it will probably create hope that I will look into it. And if I kept my promise, that it would build trust. I think it's time, Mr. Chairman, that we need to start building trust with the Butters and the residents of Falmouth over this issue. With that in mind, I have come to the following conclusions. First, the turbines need to be dismantled and removed. Secondly, we should be looking into solar in the future for renewable energy, which will help us cut our reliance on fossil fuels. Solar is a less intrusive form of alternative energy. And as I said, I am a true believer in alternative energy. Third, we need to reach out to Senator Murray, Representative Vieira, and Madden immediately to ask for specific help. As I said, we must be very specific what we are asking for. Fourth, we need to get Falmouth officials, officials from the DEP, CEC, and of course our state delegation, all in one room at the same time to discuss this issue. Of course, whatever decision we make individually, as in the past, some of us are going to be attacked, try to tear down our reputation, and, but that's what this job's about. It's part of the job, it's just that I'm not someone who's really favorable to the politics of hate. When you want to disagree with me on a particular issue, disagree. But it's the name-calling that really is a negative aspect of this, and we don't need any more of that. Prior to coming to this decision, I have done many hours of reading and research, I've spoken to many people on both sides of this issue, and back in October of 2010, I spent two evenings from midnight to six AM at these turbines. So I have had some personal involvement with these turbines. I've also read the hundred and eighty me emails that I have saved on my computer, the three hundred-plus emails and letters which are in these books from the public comment period, and many conversations with townspeople. And finally, my honest and good judgment brought me to the decision I make here today. And, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for allowing me to make these comments, and I yield the floor back to you.
Anybody else want to make some suggestions? Where do we go? Doug, Pat?
I'm very wary of making this decision in a hasty way, or I think the plan that we have to come up with has to be one that is thought through very carefully and can get the support of the town as carefully, as much as possible. I think it has to be a phased approach. I'm inclined to agree with Selectman Braga. My biggest argument for taking these turbines down as soon as we can is that, well, there is not peer-reviewed evidence that these are causing health issues. I don't feel we have peer-reviewed evidence that they're not. And with that question in my mind, I can't say that we cannot do anything but take, but work to take them down as soon as we can. I think it is going to be a process that we have to work towards. I'm not sure it's something that I can support that we're going to do tomorrow, but that we set a times, a schedule, a timeframe, in a way that's, that can work, so they can be taken down as quick as possible.
Pat, you want to say anything?
Well, I, I think we've had a long time to listen to people's concerns, we've had a long time to learn about both the benefits of renewable energy, as well as the concerns that the neighbors have expressed. And there's no doubt in my mind that this is a polarizing issue. And when you read, when you listen to the public statements that were made at any, more than one meeting, but particularly at the public hearing, and you read the statements that were provided to us, that came in prior to January, there's books of them over there, and I've read every one of them, and it's kind of fifty-fifty. You know, about fifty percent of the people who write in say you should take them down, and another sort of fifty percent are very committed to renewable energy. I think we have to, we have to remember that we do represent everyone in the town, I mean, we represent all the citizens of town and all of their points of view. But we also need to really carefully consider the concerns that neighbors have raised, there's no question about that. I also think that whatever decision we make, it's going to be costly, and I think it would be extremely helpful to us if we knew before we made, before we made a decision. And we have a little time left, I mean, we can put some, you know, we can consider putting some placeholders in ballot, articles on the warrant with the intent of a ballot question. But I think we should push very hard to get a commitment from the state as soon as possible to know exactly what they are going to do to help us out. I think it's really important to know that. I don't think, I would not feel comfortable putting a ballot question before the voters of this town, saying you're going to have to come up with taxes on your, or increases on your property tax to pay for eleven million dollars, and maybe two weeks later have the state say, well, guess what, you know, we can help you out. I don't think that's the right thing to do. So I think it's up to us to make sure that we get that information in advance. I also think too, I mean, I go this way, and this way, and this way, and I probably know in the end where I'm going to be, but I also think that we should take a little time to really go over the analysis that Heather has provided. This, these conceptual thoughts are very, very helpful. And I think I've always tried to look at this issue without emotion, because if you look at it with emotion, you go in one direction, and it doesn't mean that I'm not concerned about the, about the neighbors and what they have said. But I also think that we have to be able to give town meeting the right information and the right options so that they also can vote, and that they also can determine which questions should go on the ballot. And we have to, we have to be, also educate the people in the community so that they know what they're, know what they're voting on. They need to understand what the implications are. So, I honestly do think there's a real problem with wind one. I don't think that it's, I think it's old, and I think it's noisy, and I don't think it's a very good example of what a wind turbine should be. So, I really do think that we have a serious problem with wind one, there's no question about that. But that's kind of where I am now. I would like to, I don't know what you have in mind, and maybe it's going to take one more meeting to do this, before we can come up with what our recommendations are going to be to town meeting. But I would really like to see us maybe talk about some of these options, or maybe study them a little further, and then come back Friday night and talk about it again. But I'm not prepared to say, take them down, or just take one down and run, run two, or whatever, at this point. But by Friday night, I might be, I might be in that position. I'd really like to review this. I think this is excellent information that we have not seen before in this kind of a format. I find it extremely helpful.
Okay. I appreciate all the work that everybody has done in this community to try to come together. I appreciate the process that we went through to build consensus. Some folks would have preferred that we could have actually built one consensus. Sure would have made this board's job a lot easier. But, you know what, easy is not what we signed up for. Easy is not always part of the task. And I'll follow along with what Selectman Braga said, that, you know, those are the things that we signed up for. We're all human, and our jobs is to try to think through a process and think of everybody in this community, while also thinking of everybody in this community. That doesn't mean that we just always think of the greater good of everybody, but we also think of individuals in this community as well. Typically, government and good leaders think of the greater good of all. I will say that as, as a thoughtful person, I put all things into account. I have a responsibility for the, a fiduciary responsibility to this community, and not just a knee-jerk responsibility to this community, in the form of fact that what we do here moving forward, we have to do in a thoughtful way so that this community continues to be a viable community. I will say this, that I surely do not, nor never have diminished the neighbors and their thoughts, nor have I diminished the folks who are very pro-energy's thoughts. But one can't be at the expense of another. One thing that does bother me sometimes in this community is we always have to be the first to do something. First is not always better. Sometimes you're better off letting other people make mistakes, learn from their mistakes, and go forward. I got to tell you that the option of putting the photovoltaic at the same time, to me, is off the table. You don't jump from one fireplace into another. I am all for renewable energy. Great project for that is if you go out and look at the New Falmouth Ice Arena, they thought of a way to be able to sustain their facility, but do it in a way that didn't disturb their folks, didn't take up any land use, and provided, in fact, you know, some opportunities for them financially. The one thing that this project bothers me about, and the one thing that will help me make my decision, and again, keep in mind, that if I were the wizard, I would say, take them down today. But I'm not the wizard, and I don't have that ability. I look at each and every one of you folks and tell you that this board, without serious ramifications, can't make that decision tonight, nor could we at any night in the past, because the way our charter is written, we have a checks and balances. To make that decision, we have to have a funding source. The funding source would either be out of the budget, or would be either a debt exclusion, or it would be working with the state, or a combination, all of the above. I will say the most important thing for this community, at least in my mind, moving forward, and the most important thing that came out of our meetings recently, was the fact that this is fracturing our community. It's fracturing our community in the format that it's pitting one person against another. I will say that I attended the Mass Municipal Association meeting with Mrs. Flynn, as well as Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager. We had a motivational speaker. The motivational speaker said, "Hope is the engine and the energy of change and sustainability." Hope. And what I hope to accomplish is to bring this community back together, bring us so that we can live to fight another day, live to create another renewable energy project, live to be able to say that to each and every one of us, that we're a can-do community, that we can find a way to solve our problems. We have a multitude of other problems. Wastewater, as well as drinking water, those are being overshadowed by something that is very important and near-to-date to everyone's heart. You know, I was criticized a couple of weeks ago for taking some time for folks who presented something about a bike path, and that I took too much time. I remember as an elected official, that what sparks one person, one person's interest means nothing- means nothing to somebody else's. It is my job and everybody up here to listen to each and every person in this community equally about their issues. Whether they are big or small to me, they may be big or small to them. And with that being said, I will agree, and I would, will work to be able to find a way to, and I didn't come to this conclusion lightly, I want you to know, find a way to take down these turbines in a thoughtful process, and that process being, my proposal would be, that we would put an article before town meeting. And Mrs. Harper kind of admitted to, not admitted, but gave us the numbers. Ongoing for the next fifteen years, it would cost the average household between ten and eleven dollars. That's if we were not to get, if we were not to get any assistance from the state. Granted, we would have the loss of projected revenues. We'll find another way to fill those projected revenues, folks. We'll find another way to be able to move forward. It would sure be a lot easier in this tough economy to have those revenues. But for the amount of energy that this, this community has, has experienced from sides colliding, is not worth, in my mind, those type of dollars. So my proposal would be that we'd put together an article for town meeting that would say that we would go to the voters and take down and dismantle the turbines, and that this board, in a delegation, and I stress the word, a delegation, of this board, town manager, the assistant town manager, meet with our state representatives, the governor, the CEC, to find out exactly how and how much they can help us with this problem. Now, I've said all along, you can't go to them unless you know what you want to ask for. So it's up to this board to build consensus on what we're going to ask them for. But we have a window between when we put this on the warrant, on the Fourth of February, all the way to the spring town meeting, to find out what that number would be that the community would have to come up with. But I think the folks in this community would support that. Support it if you put it down in dollars and cents. I mean, even if we're paying a hundred percent of this. Thirty to, thirty, thirty dollars a year for the first three years, and then ten, eleven dollars a year, I quickly got on my notes, for the next fourteen years. You know, we've had many times, folks in the school system get up and say, it's only a pizza that I'm looking for, for an override. I look out there and I see Judy Fenwick. Sorry, but you won't be getting your pizza this year, we'd be doing it for something like this. There are priorities, and I think this should be one of the town's priorities moving forward. So interesting to see how the rest of the board thinks that we should progress forward.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to be, and we have, you know, lean very heavily on Julian, Heather, and probably the finance director to come up with the solid numbers that we should be asking for. I think we should sort of think outside the box when it comes to these figures, and get some solid numbers down, or that we need to go to the state with a request of what we actually need. I actually feel, you know, I think the state, and I don't think I'm alone in this, they're sort of complicit in this as well, with these turbines. And, I mean, the only thing that bothers me about it is, you know, when you think back, that these were purchased by, I guess, the federal government first. I mean, that was our federal tax dollars, and then we bought them, or the state bought them with our money, and now we're sort of asking the people to pay for them a third time. But I think, and you all know me as being someone who's very conservative when it comes to town funds, and I hate to see revenue lost, but when you're talking about the tranquility of life for a number of people and their health concerns, you can't put a number on that. So I would say that the town administrator's office, working with the finance director, they're smarter than I am when it comes to what we need to assist us in this endeavor. So I'd be leaning heavy on their decision on what we would need. But I do agree, we need to reach out to the state as soon as we can, and, but I would leave the number up to the people who really know, you know.
Right. And I agree with you with the number, but, and just for folks out there, when Mrs. Flynn says that she's been perplexed back and forth, I can assure you that, that I saw her speak to the governor this past weekend personally, and I wasn't in the conversation, but I know that, you know, she would be a great steward of this board, to be able to at least speak to those folks. I have no idea what their response would be, but combined with our town manager and our delegation, those folks are elected to represent us, I think that we'd be well-served moving forward. I'm sure they won't be thrilled with taking them down. I mean, some folks in the administration won't be thrilled with taking them down. But you know what? I don't think this is a depiction of wind power. I think we ended up with some bad machines that were older, that were antiquated, topography. It was a calamity of errors, and if I can use the term, Murphy's Law surely set in. All right? You know, and sometimes, you know, the best-laid intentions were left in heaven, and I think that's what really happened here, folks. I don't think anyone intentionally did anything there, thinking they were going to hurt or bother anybody. And even the neighbors that went to see those turbines that were in hull, granted they weren't the same ones, but back then, we didn't hear any, you know, warning signs, so.
I just really want to say, two years ago, when we went to the MMA, and you were actually called on by the governor by name, we were talking about health insurance, and that's why I-
Putting a lot of pressure on her right now.
I know. And I remember-
I remember that.
I remember mentioning-
Sorry, Pat.
Sorry, Pat, but-
Well, I met the governor back in 2004, before he ever ran for governor. And I had heard him on NPR one morning, when I was driving to work in Plymouth. He was interviewed by an NPR journalist. And about a month later, I happened to be at a dinner, and I saw this man walking around, you know, by himself, and I said to somebody, who's that? And they said, oh, well, that's Deva Patrick, and he's thinking about running for governor. And I said, really? So I walked over and introduced myself to him, and talked to him about the interview that I heard on the radio. And he said to me, well, how did I do? And I was very impressed with what he had to say. So I did have occasion to speak with him the other night at the meeting, and I will follow up on that. So, because I, when I say I think it's so important that we do know what the state can do here, I mean, I think the community needs to know that. I don't think town meeting or the voters at the ballot should have to vote on something and not know whether there is or is not state support. So I think we need that answer before town meeting. So I will attempt to follow up on that. I mean-
I, I wasn't saying it in a way to put you on the spot, but you know, I've, I've watched-
There's no pressure there, Pat.
I've been around a long time, remember that, you know.
I guess this is what I'm trying-
That's really what it is. It takes, you have to live a while before you do things like I do.
I guess that's what I'm trying to say. I mean, I will do whatever in my power to assist, but I think someone like yourself being involved in this, Pat, who I think probably garners a lot of respect from the people over the bridge, I think the people in Falmouth would appreciate whatever-
Well, see, I think you want, if you want to be successful locally, and you really want to represent your community, you have to, you have to kind of talk with and, you know, chat, chat up people who have more control than you have, and particularly when it comes to funding. So I've always made it a point to do that, at the county level, at the state level, and at the federal level. I've always made a point to make sure that they know there is a town of Falmouth, and that we have issues, and we have concerns, and that's what I've been doing for the last twenty years, so. I'm not saying that I always get results, but nevertheless, I think that's part of what our obligation is as elected officials, to make sure that we let the people know who have, who have the resources to help us, so what our needs are, and how they can help us. Can we just, you know, I know, I hear a couple of you talking about that. We have these articles here, these proposed articles that Heather gave us. And really, they relate to three things. What is, the first article, I'm not even sure what that does.
That excludes the existing debt. Moves it from, as a budgetary item to-
Oh, puts it on the tax rate. And puts it, okay. So that's what that does, with all the existing debt, whatever it is, puts it all on the tax rate to pay for it. The second article talks about either acquiring by purchase or eminent domain interested in real estate. It talks about mitigation, and then it talks about dismantling and disposing of the turbines, including all the engineering and design costs and so forth. So that is like two options are in Article Two. And then Article Three, it talks about shutting down one turbine and keeping the other one going. I think it would be helpful, no, doesn't it?
One or both, it gives every option possible.
A curtailment or shutdown of one or both, that's right. It talks about either or. So it gives you the, it gives the option of shutting down one or shutting down both. So I think what we should maybe narrow down, if we can do that tonight, if you're, if we're ready to do that tonight, which options we want to consider. Are we going to meet on Friday to, to-
Well, we don't have Friday posted, we have tomorrow night-
Oh, I thought we did.
We have tomorrow night-
Oh, tomorrow night posted.
If necessary. But can I, can I ask something? It appears that there's some, some ability here for us to build some consensus. Can we go back to your first slide about the one and two, taken down? And we can look at, because I really don't think any one of these particular articles would address that individually.
May I talk about the articles before we do that?
Yeah, okay.
I think they do.
Lights back on. Sorry.
Can I steal that?
Renewable energy.
All right. I'll bring in some candles.
There are three articles presented, do three different things. The first one deals with our existing debt obligation. Proposes to move it from raise and appropriate funded by available fund to exclude it, meaning funded a hundred percent by the tax base, and that would come off on the recap sheet every year, and will be required to do. Second article is to appropriate a sum of money to mitigate the neighborhood impacts, including dismantling and disposing of the turbines. So that, it makes available to you an opportunity to raise funds should we need to dismantle them. And I'm just going to talk this through. If you directed us to seek proposals to have them removed or relocated, we might not know that by April, but it's the kind of thing we can get more information about. We may want to have a raise and appropriate of four hundred thousand dollars in the event we need that to take them down, should that be the choice.
But we might not have to pay anything.
Might not need anything. And that's why I think they need to be separate.
I agree.
And the third one is the supplemental for the 2014 budget, because you will need to supplement the wind turbine, the wastewater treatment facility energy.
That's what three is.
Yeah. Because right now fiscal 2014 is in place, with a hundred and six thousand dollars for their renewable energy budget, which sustains existing contracts that are required on wind, one and wind two, whether, regardless of your vote, those need to be paid in our contractual obligations. And then the last, and then you'd need to, I'm sorry, and that's it, the energy and the renewable energy budget. So you would have to replace in the wastewater treatment facility budget, the lost energy.
One question, though. Were you talking about, if these were approved at town meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Would we have one ballot initiative if we didn't have a hundred percent of it funded from, from any additional sources, or would we have three ballots?
One.
One, okay. Okay, so in other words, and then we have a window, if we move these forward, that window being between now and town meeting, to make our recommendation on what the dollar costs are, because we may know between now and town meeting, what kind of any participation we may have from another source.
Yes, and you'll have between now and March 11 to develop your explanation and recommendations. So you have some time, depending on this vote, for us to go back, work with our staff, develop strong explanations and recommendations. You still might not know what the state will do by March 11, but that gives you some time to craft a message to town meeting. And just back to the ballot, so long as the funding source is by exclusion, you can have multiple purposes for that exclusion. The multiple purposes might be to exclude the existing debt, to exclude the dismantling costs, and you can talk about excluding rec payments, the energy costs moving forward. Those are all up for discussion, as how much the board wants to pass on to the taxpayers in an exclusion, and those decisions we have a little time to make.
In Articles Two and Three, one of them could be funded by our present funds in the renewable energy-
Can you ask the question again, Mrs.?
In Article Two, the second and third articles, some of that funding could come from our present renewable energy-
Yes.
Funds.
Not much. Not much.
There's not much there.
Because we're raising the debt, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, from the existing renewable energy budget. There won't be much left.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm just going to move to that slide. Do you still want to-
Sure, right. Just get an idea again, so the board at least conceptually sees where we are. There are no questions, no comments. You have backlights?
Do you want the lights to be turned on?
Okay, yep.
Just walk through these again. This is year one, and this is not a financial proposal, it's just an illustration of what an impact might be. If you carried the full dismantling cost in year one, so you did, you might decide you want two questions, because you may want to do a capital exclusion on that, which is a one-time appropriation, four hundred thousand, goes on the tax rate that year, and then you never pay it again. These are discussions we can have. This is if you follow that kind of a model. The estimated impact is between fifty and sixty, fifty and sixty-six dollars.
On this one, can I ask a question? Do we pay rec? On another document, you talked about the possibility of it being abolished. Is that, who's the rec go to? Is that to CEC? It's not to CEC, is it?
Yes, it's a MS. We've already been paid for the renewable energy credits that will be generated.
I understand.
Right. And we have to pay those back.
To CEC.
Yes.
So it is CEC that would be another, I mean, the state could be one thing, another group to go to is to CEC and say, hey, at the very least, forgive that.
These numbers only get better with additional assistance. This is the-
Another question on this one. Is that estimate of the fifty-three and sixty-six, is that just for one year, or is that for a number of years?
It's just year one.
That's just year one.
Just, just year one.
I'll go to year two and year three again.
Okay.
The operating is that contract that you said that we have to-
Yeah, that's the operating contract to maintain the facility, some of the phone line, the electrics, electricity that the turbine itself uses.
Heather, real quickly, does any of this include the WTOP? Was it four to, two to six hundred thousand of reselling these, or?
No, that was in the assumptions. We're assuming that we'll get no resale value, because there's an alternative that it could cost you-
Yeah.
-if there is no resale value. So I put the worst case.
Absolutely, thank you very much, okay.
Year two, you don't have the dismantling expense. So that brings that annual cost down to thirty-three dollars. Year three, the decommissioning is complete, you no longer have operating expenses. I've carried the annual debt, the annual energy and the annual rec repayments, and that's six hundred and thirty thousand, with an estimated impact of three ten-dollar pizzas. It's thirty dollars. I don't think you can get pizzas for ten dollars anymore. And that's it.
Wasn't there something for the next fifteen years?
That's, that's really, that, year three is you continue to pay the debt.
Okay.
That will decline as well. The debt will decline. The annual energy cost will increase. The rec repayments are, actually are commensurate with the bond issue, I believe, they end in 2029.
So if we took the debt and put that on the tax rate, we know we would have to increase the operate, the, the cost of the energy that is not being, that we're not getting now from the turbines, we'd have to pay for it out of the operating budget. So we would have to increase that. Is that what Article One relates to?
I'm getting asked two questions at the same time.
Okay.
I'll answer this one.
No, that's-
My question-
That's what Article Three relates to.
Article Three, okay.
Well, my question is, is the lost revenue in these numbers?
You know, I have tried to stay away from that, there's a lot of discussion about it. I have included the annual value of energy.
I have included the annual value of energy as the energy value, which means that that value of energy can, can be consumed on-site, or you can sell it. So we consume it on-site, it's factored into the original, um-
The original number?
Yes, yeah, it's 900, about 950,000 dollars a year.
Okay.
But we're going to really want to take a close look at this, these were really just developed for order-of-magnitude discussion, depending on the board's vote, we'll go back and get very, very detailed.
Is that something we could do by tomorrow night, or should we?
I think, I think we're way away from that.
Huh? I mean, I don't know, that's a lot of-
It's going to be difficult. Yeah, they're going to need to get that consultant back, I think, really to-
Are you?
Yeah. That she's talking about, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that would come when we're making the recommendation.
I think by March 11, we'd have it really well nailed down, before that.
You may know it when you go up to the State House, but before then, but-
Is it appropriate for make at least the conceptual motions of where we're moving forward work with at this time? I mean, I think, one is that I would love to propose that we approach CEC and, you know, send a delegation to them and say, "We would like you to abolish our rec repayment plan in support of, you know, a project that really did not work out very well." That would be one. The second would be a delegation to go to the state and see what funding's help they can give us in this problem. And the third would be to authorize the town manager to look for a buyer for these turbines.
Well, let me talk to my ombudsman here about whether those motions are appropriate.
I'm being put on the spot. I, I don't see why they're inappropriate. I apologize, I'm not quite sure.
All right, well, we are talking about, I'm just trying to find out whether they're, they're consistent with our agenda, and I think our agenda says, you know, that we're talking about wind, so we're-
I have no, yeah.
And I think there may be some work to really fine-tune what we're saying, but- Okay, so why don't you take each one of them individually, and then we'll entertain that motion.
Are we going to have the lights?
Sure, okay.
I forgot what I was going to say.
I hope, uh-
It's been a long week, I know the feeling.
I would move that we have a delegate from our Board of Selectmen approach the CEC about abolishing our repayment of the rec credits.
Why don't you say delegation, which would mean two, one or two, okay?
Okay.
That would be better, because we would provide Mrs. Flynn some support, maybe you, or something like that.
Happy to.
Okay.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion on the board from that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Aye, aye.
I guess the other comment I would want to make is, I know that the five of us have not seen eye to eye on this issue the entire way along. I think that we've all seen different points of view, we've heard many different points. I'm very proud of the work that we have done as a board to come to an agreement and a consensus when we still have issues that we're wrestling with, and to be a part of a board that is really trying to set a model to the town of, we have a solution, we're going to work on making this solution work. I still have some, you know, concerns about what we're doing, but this, let's move forward, and I'm glad that we're able to do that.
And, I, I totally agree with that. I don't think government is always perfect, but I think that we need to come to some consensus, and sometimes you have to leave something that behind to build that consensus to provide that leadership.
And keeping on that same course of discussion, Mr. Chairman, is just not to forget, I know you're the liaison with Pat, to the many hours put in by the volunteers of the WTOP who brought us, you know, where we are with some options and different things. I just want to make sure, you know, that they've really done quite a bit here as well.
And one point I would disagree with you, Chairman Murphy, and I don't want to tie this to our package, but I would encourage us to push very hard on going with the photovoltaic plan as soon as possible. I didn't say want tied to this, but would say, this vote is not against renewable energy, we're wholeheartedly behind it. I don't have the same risk with photovoltaic, from what I've seen, as, you know, if we need to be one of the first ones out there, I would encourage us to do so. One reason for that is the recs on photovoltaic are high for the first people in-
160.
And not say as high if we don't get in early. So I would hope that we would be, not as a motion right now, but a message that we could at least informally send to the Climate Action Plan, saying, "Come to us with a photovoltaic plan, and we'll be ready to move forward with that."
Sure, we could, we could definitely talk about it, but I mean, there are some stumbling blocks. One, it happens to be, they're talking about the waste facility, we've already turned that over to the ADIC, who's invested quite a bit of money on, on potential opportunities, which include photovoltaic. So, you know, there could be some stumbling blocks there.
Absolutely, but even as an environmentalist, if we have to cut some down, some trees at the wastewater treatment plant to be able to create land for it, I think it's important enough to. So my second motion would be that we also have a request made to the state, both to the-
Delegation.
Delegation to the state involving our representatives and to the present state senate, to see what the state can do in helping us in our existing debt, of the money that we owe on the debt for the turbines.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion from the board on that? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Ayes have it. So, we're back to these articles. Do these articles represent everything that the board is kind of thinking about philosophically? Mrs. Harper suggested we take out a line here.
Certainly, a bunch of them can be edited now, because they were a whole bunch of ors that she was leaving open to us, that we're saying arguably-
She just edited some of them, but why don't, why don't we look for a motion to approve these in concept, and then Monday night, we're going to actually approve the one. So that'll give both the town manager and assistant town manager an opportunity to develop the final language for the articles, based off of what the consensus the board has come up with. So do I have a motion to say that we build on that consensus and come up with the definitive articles from Monday evening, unless someone else has another suggestion?
No.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so that's a motion?
Second.
In a second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Ayes have it. Anything else that we need to speak about?
I guess I was also going to make the motion that we do direct the town manager to start looking for a purchaser of our turbines.
Well, we'd have to, I think we'd have to wait till the vote and set out an RFP.
Okay, you're right.
Yeah, you know, that'd have to go through the regular process of that.
I guess the only other issue to, to maybe still have the elephant in the room is, I think we do need to stick with our plan for this fiscal year that we have already devoted to, and until at least July 1st, 2013, we're going to run them on the 12 hours, on 12 hours off.
Is that a motion, or?
I guess that's a, I'm bringing it up in front of, I think that's something we should discuss at some point.
I, I think, I think the status quo is, is, my interpretation would be right now, at least through town meeting, we're still looking for a vote that this board is going to try to persuade town meeting, and then as well as at the ballot. So at the bare minimum, we're at that point there. We may want to include, I know that we included some funding for FY14, we may want to include some funding for the remainder of FY13 on the article, or on our recommendation, so if it in fact is successful with gaining money from the state and at the ballot, the day after the election, we'd have the ability in fact to turn those.
So you're suggesting Article Three on the articles we have right here, might also include funding to supplement fiscal year 2013?
The remainder of fiscal year 13, 2013. Does that sound reasonable?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So we have an end game here. Whether we can achieve that end game, let's surely hope so.
I just wanted to make one comment, is that we can just hear the board's thoughts on how to move forward, and we can begin to pull together the procurement process for removal, and that might give us some instruction on what the costs are. And I just wouldn't want you to limit it to seeking purchasers, because if you fail to get a purchaser, then you need to be prepared to dismantle them. So we'll just hear you on that, and, and start working, it will take some time.
I think we're chugging you with a couple of options here. Okay. Anything else?
No, but I do want to thank you this evening, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership in going through this, and also tonight, for not saying "Put the chicken before the egg" once. I want to thank you for that.
Thanks a lot. If we have nothing further to discuss this evening, I want to thank the board here for working together. I mean, this has been a long process to get us where we are right now. We're on the last lap here, so it's not a blue sight of how we're headed and what our goal is going to be. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Ayes have it. Thank you.
company specializing in the installation of Title V septic systems. Cavosa Excavating is one of the largest septic system installers on Cape Cod. Whether it's upgrading your current system or installing a whole new system, Cavosa Excavating can do the job. Cavosa Excavating, 508-563-5530. Founder Abraham Penn taught a valuable lesson that has been part of a tradition since 1919, when he said, "I'd rather make a friend than make a sale." For more than 90 years, Puritan has been making friends as a unique, family-owned company right here in Cape Cod. At Puritan Cape Cod on 199 Main Street, as well as Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more. Puritan Cape Cod, 548-0116, or puritancapecod.com.